I'd like to call to order tonight's special board business meeting of July twenty fourth, two thousand and seventeen. Sarah McKeon.
Al Roman, Hallid.
Here.
McKeon.
Here.
Us.
Here.
Romansky.
Ken.
Tucker.
Here.
And sponsor.
Good evening. Let's move on to item number two, which is consideration of the agenda as presented. And there is only one slight change that I would like to make, and that is I'd like to push number eleven up before ten. So I'd like to adjourn after we've had engagement. What we'll do with the engagement, we'll just do it right here in the room. And we'll ultimately leave that as more of a commenting period as opposed to back and forth.
Do you want any sort of sign in, or you just took free flow accountability?
Uh, no, a sign in.
Sign in, okay.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Slight change there.
Thank you.
Any other changes? If not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post save sign. Motion carries. All right, uh, new business action items. So we'll jump right to three point one, student handbooks. And Dr. Meehan.
Yes, so student handbooks were uploaded to Board Book for all of your review for every school in the district. Changes came in two ways, either in red on them, or there's a couple of attached sheets that show just the on-page changes or changes of language. And if you're a little...
I really appreciate the clip notes, two pager. I love that.
I have a motion to approve the handbooks.
Second.
Move to second. Any other discussion?
Um, just like to say that this is something that we do every year. Some years there's more substantive changes. Others, it's just maybe language changes or some, a few different procedures or policies that are changed. And so this is something we do every year, and I have looked through it, and I think it's great.
I only have one question, that is the early release, and I know we've got a lot of principals in the room. Are you gonna, it's probably unfair to put you on the spot, um, sort of put a button on these early, these additional early release dates we have? Are we gonna make them a little bit more obvious? I know they're already on the calendar, but maybe on your initial welcomes, something that we're gonna keep in front of people so they all know that we have them this year. Do you have any special plans?
The communications department is working on that report.
Okay. Good enough. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post save sign. The handbooks are approved. Yes. And now we'll jump to three point two, discussion and potential hiring of an interim superintendent. I'll now turn this over to Tucker to kick off the discussion.
Who is going to turn it back over to the board as a whole.
That's a lot of turnovers.
Um, I know that each one of us individually has been doing a lot of homework in the last seven days. And we've all learned a lot. We've gotten a lot of feedback. And now is the time to determine how we're gonna move forward. So, we could start by doing the same type of discussion that we had on Thursday. Meaning we could start with one candidate, talk about them a little bit, then move on to the next candidate. And then ultimately, a group call?
Do that.
Let's do that.
Well, maybe, 'cause there's some things that apply to both. I just wanna first celebrate that I heard, like you said, dozens, hundreds, emails, phone calls, conversations at Cub, whatever, that everybody that I've heard from thinks that both are clearly above the line and clearly a great fit for what we need right now. So no matter what, we've got, we'll walk out of here with a great candidate. Both are the, the reputa- have the reputation of the healers, the servant leadership model. So I just wanted to highly say that, uh, that I'm thrilled with both of them, and I'd be thrilled to work with either of them. I have a little bit of a preference, but we can talk about that later. But anybody else on the...
I agree completely with what you said. I mean, I was kinda worried when we first opened the whole process, 'cause, you know, we had a late start, and to narrow it down to these two candidates, I'm very pleased with, with what they bring to the table and what, what direction we're going to be doing one of those campaigns. I do have my own preference.
Well, then I will echo that as well. I also have a preference, but, we win no matter how this goes down.
Yeah.
It's that simple. We all, we all win.
Okay, let's start with Gary. Um, I know we talked a lot about Gary, or a little bit about Gary on Thursday. And based on the prolific feedback I have gotten from staff, community members, parents that used to be in his district when he was a principal, teachers that he works with now in Zabroda and Zepa, principals, school board members. It has been made very clear to me that when Gary says that he will do something, he will do that. And one of the things he said is that he will help us move forward. I have come to believe that he could do that.
My thing from all the emails we've all gotten, and the purpose of, I mean, they've all been about culture. And not just the last two years, I mean, you know, he had a bad culture, and he changed that in two years, but you go back to his principal schools, and every last one of them talks about his culture.
And not only did he, um, improve that culture, but he did it while improving the fund balance pretty significantly.
Yeah, in fact, I have those numbers here.
You do?
I do. According to M D E, um, the year that he started, they had a five point two one percent fund balance. And, um, they don't have numbers yet for his second year. So I can only tell you in his first year, he was able to improve that to nine point seven one percent, according to the Department of Education. Which is a four point five percent increase. And I had questions about that, whether it is, because it's a smaller district, is it relatively easy, easy to do? And the answer that I received is a percent is a percent. And whatever the scale is, that took work. And he was able to accomplish it.
Yeah, and I mean, normally the way to approve a fund balance is to say no to almost everything and make some very difficult decisions. And to be able to improve the culture at the same time shows what a fantastic personality he is. I use the word to describe the moment we had when he asked us a question at the end. I use the word magic. I mean, he just has that every time I hung up with him, every time I've interacted with him. I'm a more engaged, smarter person than I was when I first interacted with him. I mean, the bar's low there. Anybody else?
A lot of what I wrote down, I had to write a list. I had to create a spreadsheet, emails. Had to label where they're from, the year they come around. I mean, and literally if I took out non-district employees, it's fifty fifty. So I didn't get a lot of help. And there's five people who just don't care, they could go either way. But I had to write a list, and a lot of Gary's list for me is about people. I had a few more extra things about Mike, but Gary was really just about culture, about people, and about trying to probably be that healer for us.
There was an individual that I, that called me today out of the room from his district. And that individual talked about his healing properties, if you will, and his ability to build culture. And that individual indicated that the year prior to him coming on, uh, that that person was ready to leave. And they were at, the culture was such where they were at rock bottom, as were a number of other people in that district. And, um, easily within that year, uh, that person's opinion was completely changed. And although that person again said that they were, would be very sad to see him go, they also know that he is a high enough quality candidate where it's just going to be a matter of time before somebody else takes it. It's, it's gonna be that simple. So, um, I know when I look back to things like the results of the teacher survey, you know, that Dale Anderson was able to provide for us, that really showed that the district staff wants to see the superintendent present and invested in them and in their buildings and in their lives and their classrooms. And for me, the feed, what I took from all of the feedback is that Gary will absolutely be this and, and, you know, ten times probably more than we would have expected. And that this person actually does it, and it's natural, it's genuine, and everybody that he touches actually feels that they are something really, really special. So for me, um, that weighs very heavily on my decision. Does anyone even do that?
Another factor for me is that Gary, on his own, independently, over a year ago, if not longer, started doing research on academies and reaching out to, to those who have knowledge in academies. And he was working on bringing something similar, if he could, to his district partnering with, I think he said Pine Hill. And so while he doesn't know exactly what Shakopee's academies are developing into, he believes in the approach, and he believes in, um, what they are trying to accomplish. And he did that before knowing that there would ever be a position available to him here. And I, I find that really compelling, too. Yeah, can I keep talking? Okay. The other thing I really liked about, I like about Gary is the life that he has and elementary background. In the three and a half years that I've been on the board, most of the work that I have done and the energy that I have put in has been at the secondary level. And I believe that we need to balance that better than we have done, than I have done. And I believe that we are building a base at that level, and they are doing a fantastic job, don't get me wrong. But I do believe that having somebody in our leadership that just has that always, you know, percolating that there are, we're eating more than twelve, we're eating one one. And to keep that always in the, in the focus.
Do you have a comment still here?
I do. Well, um, I do wanna say that there is a differentiating factor between Gary and Mike in that Gary has a master's degree and Mike has a... Thank you. I knew they had, Doctor of Education. Okay. And I have been trying to figure out how much weight to put on that, how much value that continuing education has. It's just a piece, but it's a factor, so.
You wanna talk about Mike now?
Sure.
Well, after that, I guess I'll, I'll keep talking. I thought Mike was very open, trustworthy, and approachable in his style. He didn't speak about culture as much, but he demonstrated through his self-effacing, self-deprecating sense of humor that he was open and, and looking for feedback. I felt like he was pretty inclusive as well. I thought he had some good process and strategy thoughts. So anchoring to the big picture. Both of them did a great job of anchoring to what's best for kids and what's best for the district. And I, I just, I liked that Mike was detailed and thorough and very purposeful.
I like how, I mean, he's opening mine and we're, the biggest need was to focus back on the kids. We happened before. We know that. And I also like that he dealt with budget cuts back and back years, which nobody wants to, but it happens. And we might still be going through those issues going forward. And I also like how, his point about how, um, if he's got an issue with a teacher, he sometimes calls them over teaching. That sometimes it's not meant for that, and it's, it's, there are a lot of it that we're, we're looking at that way. I mean, it's, some teachers aren't meant to be teachers.
Mary.
Gary. I like how he brought up his kids very well. It sounds funny, but I like that. It goes to show you how much importance he puts on kids.
Uh, I did some research into the fund balance under his leadership at Kuhu as well. And years, I can tell, from thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen, and fifteen and sixteen, it was pretty stable between eight and ten percent. Which is, which is great.
So you talked about differentiators between degrees and whatnot. I guess I, you know, being in a charge, I hope it's a resume that's quite a bit. You know, Gary's been a superintendent for two years, and I believe that they're talking about that if he stays in the district, that they want a second contract with him.
Yeah.
Mike's been four years already into a, has earned a second contract. And then he also had, well, they've both been building principals. Mike had that one year. Oh, what was it, the...
Teaching, like a teaching and learning director.
Secondary ed focused.
Secondary ed.
Um, where's, where's Nancy?
He, Derek, I think it was Director of Secondary Ed, but it'd be a teaching and learning position.
Okay.
You know, at the director level in Stillwater.
So another district level, he's been out of the classroom or out of the building for, for, so it's, if you put those two together, five years, that is for Gary, it's two. I don't know that that's a huge difference. I think there's part of some growth in the third and fourth cycle of doing the same job, but again, Mike just blew the resume.
I thought that Mike's, um, answers to our questions were possibly a little bit more detailed, a little more process oriented. Which, in the long run, could be a really good thing. Kind of have, not that Mike isn't capable of that, I don't know, I haven't talked with him, or Gary, sorry.
He said Mike.
But I thought Mike, for the most part, gave solid answers to almost every question we asked.
I like that he's got a set schedule, what he wants to do in the first forty days. He's all around.
Yeah, a lot of time in the buildings, and a lot of time dedicated to relationship building. And, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say a few things I listed today while I was processing this. I like that he is background in school management, so that should be easy to catch on to. He seems to have more exposure to diversity than Gary, at least within the answers to questions. I also mentioned that he was a super leader. And I loved his forty day plan, very detailed, very thoughtful. I liked his comments about putting the focus back on kids. And I go back to that quote that he said, "You have to do what you believe in." And, um, I don't really like that, though, those things.
I think, I loved that quote. I also love the, there, there is no Redmond plan. And then I think he went on to say something like, uh, "The plan's probably already here," or "From the staff that, and then, the resource is already here, it's just how do we, you know, tweak that or adjust and, and keep moving forward."
And lastly, I put down, his, his answers are very detailed and full of substance, and so.
You know, to piggyback on that, especially the hypothetical situation that came up in the email question. He didn't just, didn't just answer the question. I thought Gary did a very good job answering the question with a high-level process overview and why, which was great. I really, really enjoyed that. Mike's was, well, first of all, let's peel it back before the question, like, how did we get here? Set the stage, get the context, understand, here, here are who needs to be involved, when they need to be involved, why they need to be involved, what, you know, what you need from them. And then potential risks and pitfalls and strategies to manage around those risks. And it was just, you know, like you said, it's incredibly detailed and thorough. So one of the things, you know, I loved that, with both of these, as I said at the beginning, we win no matter what, because they're both very, very, very strong individuals, and they, they both bring something a little bit different to the table. For me, it came down to, um, as was mentioned, really the process stuff when it comes to Mike, or really the people stuff when it become, when, you know, when you're looking at Gary. And I tried to take this from a, what do we need right now? What if it's two years? And this is the only thing we get out of this individual, and that person is not interested or isn't selected maybe to go on. What do I personally feel, and what do I think the community needs in the next two years? And for me, it came down to, one is, we have a lot of really, really smart people in this district. We have a really strong administration, we got smart principals, we got people that just need their potential unlocked. I don't know that they need to be guided around, 'cause they're really intelligent and they can get a lot of things done. What they need, what I believe we need, is somebody that's going to bring us all together, that's going to unlock that potential, that's going to bring influence, that's gonna lead by physically being there alongside them, shoulder to shoulder, and motivating them so that they, like I said, they can unlock their true potential. 'Cause I feel like unfortunately, some of the folks in this district have probably been stifled for a number of years. And we need somebody that can unlock that. As much as I like Mike, and I think he do a great job, I feel that Gary would do a better job with that piece in the small amount of time. And to me, if we don't take care of the base, if we don't take care of the people, the teachers, the D O, none of the, none of the rest of the process stuff really matters, because we'll just be rolling out processes, with people that are not invested, and are not engaged, and are not influenced, and are not inspired to really, um, get in, get in front of that thing. It doesn't mean that, and I don't, and this is the downside. I don't know that Mike couldn't do that. But based on the umpteen bajillion emails that we got about Gary, where all the individuals that say, "He does that," it's not Gary saying they do that, it's, "He's has done this. Here's how he's impacted my life. Here's how he's come into a building or into the district and done that." And a couple of emails is one thing, but I cannot ignore. The voices are so loud, uh, and, and if I had one tenth of that passion delivered here, I think that could nuke the dial here in Shakopee. So for me, I'm just gonna put my cards on the table and say that when it comes to healing and bringing the people together, taking care of the people, um, that to me is the immediate need. And I think that, I think once the potential's unlocked, um, our, our administration's gonna go crazy.
And just to verify, or pile on what you said about the emails, I mean, we were getting emails from people who he worked with fifteen years ago, who have not stayed in touch, right, and they're, they're not close friends. It's, people are that excited about what he did that long ago in their lifetime. Um, and what's, what's the phrase, fifty million Elvis fans can't be wrong? I mean, and we didn't get fifty million, but,
Got a lot.
North of a hundred.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, it was.
Different people vote for, for Gary.
Yeah.
So it, yeah.
And people did vote for Mike, too. This is not to take anything away from Mike. But the overwhelming megaphone in your ear that you cannot ignore was, "You want this guy." Well, it's interesting, because I, it's funny, because you said the thing, right, that you have a better feel for, for Gary being the better fit, because you feel like he'd immediately tackle the culture. Actually, that's why I feel like Mike's the better fit, because I think Mike, with his process, with his ready to hit the ground running, and again, that's not saying, that's in no way saying Gary couldn't. I, after having the good fortune of spending three rounds of interviews, where, 'cause the personnel committee, I was able to do two phone calls and then the, the person interview, I have a really good grasp of, of where Mike is at. I've got a pretty good gap, uh, grasp of Gary, and like I said, he provided some good overview. I felt Mike was just a little bit more ready to make that leap from, um, from a smaller district to a big district by having the framework. I agree that we have many talented people who, who need to be unleashed or, or empowered more. So I firmly believe that. I just felt like Mike was a little bit more, and maybe it's, maybe it's just having been a super couple more years. But I, I just felt like he's our better fit. Again, if, if, if the vote here goes to Gary, I'll be thrilled to, uh, to work with him. Both, both can absolutely do this job, but I personally am leaning towards Mike.
I can tell you, on Thursday, I walked out of here and I was a huge Gary fan. And I said, "It's gonna take mountains to get me to change." I think I hit a mountain. It still has a lot to do, I, you know, we did get a ton of emails from a ton of people. But when I actually sorted it out and listened to my, the community, and the, and the feedback I got from our community, I feel the sense is more on Mike than it is on Gary. Greater detail, I think, in some of my emails and conversations that I've had. But I, I, I came here without a decision, 'cause I'm that conflicted. But I'm leaning, I can tell you I'm leaning towards him.
So I believe, I've spent, I can't tell you how many hours I've spent on this. And I have done everything in my power to find anything that differentiates them to the point where I was sure. I was sure that I was gonna make the right decision tonight. And the reality is that I believe that eighty percent of these two individuals are nearly identical. In their character, in their competence, in their, uh, who they are as human beings, what they're capable of, what their leadership qualities are. Eighty percent is nearly identical, from what I can tell. The other twenty percent, to me, lies in unknowns. Gary felt stronger, um, heal, you know, being able to heal, being able to truly, from day one, create relationships that feel genuine and that make people feel empowered. Mike felt more, a little bit more methodical, a little more, um, possibly when decisions are being made, maybe he would think about them real, you know, more strategically. But here's the gig, I don't know that to be true for either one of them. Those two, the twenty percents, really could be identical as well, or could be shifted based on how they work. The only differentiation that I could ultimately can't come up with is that I told myself that I was gonna listen. And I, too, have chicken scratches and spreadsheets and, um, I've broken it down between, here's who cabinet sort of leaned toward, and here's who, um, teachers leaned toward, here's what our community leaned toward, and here's what the people who have actually known these individuals and have worked with them. And the reality is, it comes down over two to one for Gary, and if I'm listening, that has to be my differentiation.
I started looking, trying to go big picture, you know. Obviously, I want this person to succeed beyond the two years. But that's not what, it just dawned on me last night, that's not where it has cast for. We're here for the two-year interim. And with the quick fix, with kind of what Gary, I lean Gary. And the reasoning is because of the, the quick fix of the, the fund balance that he's done and the culture that he's done. In the two years at, you know, that's what we're looking for here, is two years. And I want that. Beyond other, I mean, there's, there's other things, but those are the two sticking points that I have been holding in front of me, and that's why I'm here.
Gary, please, how much?
If I never done for you, the email I got, I'd be a rich person.
We all would be.
Yeah.
But I'm leaning toward, um, Mike, because he gave more, more exploration in his decision. Thank you, Gary, then.
I'll throw this out there. Um, and this is one of those, there's so many positives, and it's so easy to look at the positives with both of these candidates. A differentiator for me was also, and this is something that's been mentioned by, um, folks in this town, and that's, I'll use the term good old boys' club. Unfortunately, although I think it's a relatively weak connection, there is a connection with Stillwater and Oakdale. And not that there's anything wrong with those districts whatsoever. However, folks have indicated that they would really like a clean break from, um, other districts. But we have brought in good help, you know. Unfortunately, not everybody sees that as a positive. So this would be also a really good testament to show that we can break ties and we can have a clean slate. Yeah, I'd see, I see that the other way. I see, um, that the district in North St. Paul, we, we've got some very good people from those districts, from that district.
from those districts, from that district specifically. We've had a few that, you know, haven't worked out as well, haven't been as dynamic. But we've gotten great people who worked under a longtime great superintendent and saw how the job was done by somebody who I've always heard of as a model superintendent. So, I view that as a reference, I get the point, right? I mean, the people who are going to, to accuse us of having an old boys' network or anything like that, it's a, it's a, there are overlaps, right? Mike worked in that district, he worked for a year in Stillwater. And, you know, the funny part in Stillwater, eh, the plan, the reason for their ranker right now is that their superintendent with all of one year and their board decided to, this was all in the last two years that they decided to start closing schools. That was after Mike was gone, right? And so, I, if somebody wants to say that he, we, we shouldn't hire somebody who was at a school, that somebody in that district did something objectionable to them two years after he was gone, I, I don't accept that as a, as a differentiator. It's something to discuss. And you're, you're right that it's something out there. I view the connection to, to six twenty-two, six twenty-two, North St. Paul, Oakdale, as a, as a strong positive. Then again, I mean, Gary was also in one ninety-six, he was in Bloomington, he was in South, you know? They've all got, they've both got very strong pedigree for that.
All right.
Well, this is fun. Reggie's input.
I don't, uh...
We don't have a mechanism to get it, okay? Unless you can get it on the concord and get back.
And nobody will matter.
Oh, we did, we don't know about it.
I think, one of the things that I heard, a good analogy was that my, and this is an oversimplification, but that my head wants Mike, but my heart wants Gary, right? And I found myself in my own shorthand labeling, you know, with catchphrases and words. You know, I labeled Gary the healer. And it's like, well, wait, Mike, you know, was, is, was known as a healer too, right? Maybe Gary's a little bit ahead of him in that space? But that's not to say Mike can't do it. And at the same time, just because I feel more comfortable with the strategy and the process and the thought leadership from Mike's answers, that doesn't mean Gary's been highly successful too. So, just because I think Mike's a little bit stronger in that space doesn't mean that I think, you know, Gary's not very capable. Success doesn't just happen, right? I mean, and he's been successful. So, I have a high degree of faith that he'd be successful here.
Can I ask you something that is totally contrary to popular belief?
Please.
You will anyway.
I will. Gary's only two years out of a building. And I wanna focus beyond kids.
Isn't that what Mike said, focus back to students?
It is, it is. But I don't necessarily know that being longer outside of a building means they're less capable of being a good leader. Not that we've implied that, we haven't, I'm just making this up. But I actually like that, that he's been able to accomplish what he's been able to accomplish so soon outside of a building.
Again, both are very impressive.
They're both really impressive. Again, I, I agree.
I just wonder as we, we're forecasting how they're gonna make the leap from, both of them are small districts with one elementary principal, one secondary principal. Who's gonna have the, I mean, who's gonna have the framework and the, and the ability to communicate? One of the things I love most about Gary was the, how he writes at least two handwritten notes before he leaves work every day. I'm an H R guy, feedback recognition, spectacular thing. I love that he does that. But he's able to get to his whole staff every couple of months, but, you know, as, you know, per ratios, right? We've got six hundred and fifty teachers. You know, when we get all told, our staff is a lot, you know, a lot bigger than that. He's gonna try and do that, it's gonna be ten, twelve, fifteen. I would hope that he would do it, right? But, I, you know, I, I just, I know he can scale up. I just feel better that Mike's more well-equipped to, to scale up more quickly. That's my, and now it's not my head or my heart, it's my gut there, it's a precise, well, good.
I'm gonna go back and into, and I'll advocate for this for a little bit, that our teachers have been neglected and they made it very clear in their survey that they are unhappy, anybody that took that survey made it very clear that they are unhappy. They want presence in the building. And we need, in my opinion, right now, somebody that is more actively involved with the buildings and the teachers and the principals. We've got a smart district office staff. They need some guidance, but I don't think they need a leader to be over them full-time every day. I wanna see this person out in the building making the impacts that they need to be making day in and day out. And to me, again, that is the driver, and if that's the short-term need, or if we only have this person for two years, that's, that is the single thing that I need to see accomplished here.
Yeah, it's interesting though, because I feel that Mike, by his process, would be present in the buildings just as much. I mean, I don't think we can measure anything, but I, a wholeheartedly agree. Like, we need to be having a superintendent who is in the buildings. We need to be in the buildings more. A lot of things that survey helped, not necessarily bring to light, but put a, put a picture on. I think some of what that survey told us, we've already addressed to a lot. I mean, this hire is because we addressed a very big part of that problem. That's not saying, I'm not saying we should still be looking for somebody in that space. I just, I, I don't know that, in my mind, I can say that Gary's gonna be in the buildings more than, than Mike is.
You know, another thing we need to think about is, we're also revamping this C A M approach, which is gonna take a lot of, there's a lot left to do, right Nancy? Um, Mike comes with a teaching and learning background that could be very helpful in this process. So, while yes, I want somebody in the building, we need to also remember, we have all this other stuff going on that has to be taken care of. And I don't think we can lose sight of that because we have so much to do in a short period of time.
I gotta admit, I was concerned about that, Nancy, not to throw you out, but just since I, I made mention of this some weeks ago. And Nancy is actually somebody that helped reassure me that we, I'm not gonna put words here, but, it's not that we don't need a process person, but she reassured me that we have very talented people to do this work. Because I was concerned about somebody being able to come in, and we, to your point, we've got all these different wheels in motion with the academies and the Ford E G, all this stuff. And Nancy kind of talked me off the ledge a little bit and said, "We, we're in good shape. We're in implementing, we are doing, we're going." So, not to say that they don't need help, but I'm less concerned, having talked to her, about this person needing to fill that kind of a role. As opposed to being a support, yes, there'll be things to do. But having talked to her, I actually feel like, it made it safe for me to look at the individual teachers and principals in buildings as job one.
I, it's really important to me that whoever is sitting in that office, that their priority is developing and empowering our incredible district leadership, our principals, and our teachers. I agree with you that I've learned, I think you said, somebody said, that to some degree, they've been stifled over the past few years. Some of their best work may have been not valued. And I don't want to see that happen again because I think we have incredible people in this district. And if we can give them the needs, they will fly. So, whoever is sitting in that office, they will, they need to empower the people that we have here. And ultimately, I think that's why I lean toward Gary. I call these people who emailed me because I thought, are these just emails saying, you know, did Gary, A, did Gary ask them, are they sincere? Are they, even though, even from the tone of them, you can tell truly how sincere they were. I was still skeptical. And after talking to these individuals and hearing what they had to say about this man and how they, when there were tough decisions to be made, he would stand beside them and, you know, and support them. When there were, when there were challenges in the building, he would talk through it, gather input, and, and listen and learn. And how everybody he touched felt like they were a value add to their organization or as a human being. And, and they all say they're better because of it, every one of them. I don't, I don't even know how that's possible with the sheer volume of them that we got. So, I, I believe in him. Not that, I, I believe in Mike too, I absolutely do. And if that's the, the will of the board, Mike will have my full support from day one. But I, I absolutely agree. So, your comments made me look back at my questions about, that we asked these candidates. And one of the questions was number seven about hats. Mike says that he loves the concept of leadership. And, and Gary says he empowers people. And then, when I go to question number thirteen, what is your biggest strength? Mike said developing people. And Gary said positive, teaching at all levels. So, I think they both could equally do that.
I agree, I one hundred percent agree, it's just that, it's hard with those...
It was a megaphone.
Here's the one thing with that megaphone, you know? How do we know that there wasn't a, hey, can you, all one hundred, my, hundred thousand of my friends, could you go email the board?
Well, partly because some of them were my friends that reached out to teachers that they knew in that district. There's no way he could know.
I, I agree with you on that point, but some of these emails, but, I mean, there was a lot of emails. I mean, it kindly gives you that little bit of, was there, you know, or requests to seek the board or something like that? And maybe that's why we didn't hear equally from Mike.
True.
Just a little thought. You would not ever know.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
What you were saying about that magic, right? I mean, I believe he is who he presents himself to be, I believe that he is genuine. And so, I can see, the person we saw here last Thursday night, or the person I spoke to twice, I can see him having that kind of impact, whether he's a classroom teacher, a, a principal, superintendent. And I'm very moved by it, and I'm very excited by that prospect. And I just still, at the end of the day, feel like Mike's a, a better fit. And like I said, more ready. I can project Mike's skill set more, I don't wanna say safely, but I, I can see it transitioning faster. And like Tony said, we just had this two-year, we're not trying to hire the next decade, we're hiring the two years.
When we look at the two years, what do we need to do in two years? I mean, a lot.
A lot.
A ton, it has to be done.
A ton, and that's why I think it's so important that somebody has a process and a plan. Again, I'm not saying Gary doesn't, but, I mean, they both did a ton of work. You, you referenced the academy study. Mike put together, how many pages is this document? Of a plan, integration, a forty-day plan? And, you know, when we, when we asked about ninety days, he said that, well, the ninety days would be based on how the first forty go. And he's already that far into his thought process of how he would grab the reins and, and, you know, like we talked about, I'm looking for the word, remove the stifling from our staff and let them soar. I, I just feel like he's, he's a little more ready to attack.
One thing that, the plan I liked, that I, I would admit, that was, that was nice. However, or paid, I should say, we as a board are going to be providing this individual, whoever it is, with our expectation on what our thirty, sixty, and ninety days look like. So, although it's great that he can have a plan, I guarantee that between us and the cabinet, we have a shopping list of things. And somebody that comes in with too hardcore of a plan, are they gonna be able to flex to what we need them to do? That's a very real concern. Not a huge concern, but it's a very real concern because we have a shopping list of things we're gonna want this person to do. So, although Mike's got a plan, that's great. It may or may not hit all, check all the boxes that we need it to check quite frequently. And he said he doesn't have a Redmond plan, but he had a plan. So, which one is it? Do you have a plan or you don't have a plan?
Well, you've got a forty-day interim.
This plan is to engage himself with us as people and to get to know us and to get to know the district.
I, I get that.
Not like, hey, we're gonna write curriculum and write.
But we need to let him know what, what we see as the expectations and the needs as well.
And we will give him the strategic framework for what our goals are. I don't think he'll be scheduling his day.
This guy did a lot of research, and he's ready to go to night, to overnight, rhythm of the rails, shopping farmers market, midwak and Sioux farmers market, I mean, this guy's very party.
Maybe not the...
He's done a lot. I mean, you're, how much partying is he doing at a farmers market? But really, I'm just saying, he has shown that he's going to engage himself into everything. And you can't dictate what he does from five to nine all the time.
Ooh.
So...
Although we have lots of meetings from five to nine.
We can just fill it up.
We may have a few events that he has to...
That's Tuesday night, we're gonna be...
You know, it's interesting, one of his own Redmond's rules in here? Because I think we've all referenced that our top priority is building, rebuilding trust and the culture within our staff and our buildings for the good of our students, right? I think we've all said something like that is our top priority. And then I think about our next, our top priority, and, and he is very clear that if you have too many top priorities, you really have not, right? So, and he would help us focus and crystallize that that is the top priority, and then everything else fits into that. I think that'd also be a strength for Gary. And then Gary would make culture first, the first agenda item on every meeting would be, how can we improve the culture? So, and, and saying kudos to both.
Bottom line, it's a tough decision.
Yes, dear.
I would be happy to work with either one of them.
I would also be happy to work with either one of them.
I would too.
I do like what Gary counted, when he first walked into the office and he had that somebody go that was, had been there a long time. We may have some people here that might need to be restructured or, or, you know? Figure it out if their employment is right here. And I mean, he did that almost immediately when he got there. Which was, he wants, yeah, he's building culture, but he's also restructuring it as well.
I, yeah, I mean, he, when I was, when I still had questions about the process and the execution, never did I have a fear that he couldn't make the tough decision and make it quickly because that, I mean, to walk in the door and let someone go who had, you know, a pretty good network, that's, that takes some, some convictions and some courage. And so, that definitely was, not that we want to do that, but sometimes if it needs doing, I, you know, we can't have somebody who's gonna shy away from, from making tough decisions.
I think my favorite answer that Mike gave after, after reflection was when we asked him what sort of unique creative out-of-the-box type idea do you have? And he talked about general music and band and choir. And he talked about changing the paradigm by changing the question that you ask and making things possible. I loved that about Mike, I thought that was pretty powerful.
People as powerful as Gary's to that question where he chose to build a bridge with cardboard boxes to try to tie in all of the district staff. I would love to see a person build that bridge. I think it really stood, people could walk across it, but...
Yeah, some people.
That was a...
You and I would wait for the better built bridge.
I feel like we could keep doing this all week. So, eventually, we have to land this plane.
Yep.
And we do have a recommended action, a language for a recommended action that just simply has two blanks. And we have to fill in the blanks with somebody moving to offer somebody else, one of these two candidates, the interim superintendent role. So, I guess I could ask if there's any other discussion?
We're all kind of in a pickle here.
A little bit.
Me and our seven core members.
Yep. We can next have ourselves, unfortunately.
So, Mr. Chair, would you give up this thing to go?
Uh, well, we are going to go forward with this because that is what we're here to do. So, um, it's okay that, um, this is a split vote if in fact it, it goes down that way. And just so that everybody knows, uh, the candidates were asked, uh, if they had any opposition to a split vote, and they, um, not any concerns. And both candidates recognized that under the unique circumstances that we're dealing with right now, um, that that was perfectly acceptable and that either one would, um, would accept the role with a split vote. So, I appreciate that.
This could, your split vote would be a four to two, not a three to three.
Sure. That's all I'm referring to.
Yeah.
That's it.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to, uh, present. I move to offer Mike Redman as superintendent through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, subject to the parties mutually agreeing on interim superintendent contract, and authorize the Director of Human Resources to negotiate a mutually agreeable contract within the salary range that has been established for the position.
I'll second that motion.
So, when we do roll call, will we...
So it's a simple majority vote.
Simple majority.
And if it's tied, the motion fails.
Okay.
Any motion fails.
All right. Uh, all those in favor of the motion made by Mr. McCain, I won't re-say it again.
Thank you. It hurt me enough.
Saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay?
Frankly, I will call it if you don't want to, but I think it was clear.
I think it was clear.
I think we got it.
I think we are officially, um, three to three, which now leaves us with a couple of options.
Couple of options. Um, we've received some, um, legal advice, um, as far as options. Um, the first option is to make another motion, um, another, another motion to be put on the table. So that's the first one.
Can we have discussion before that, or is it, do we have to move?
Uh, you can have discussion before it, um, because the, this one just failed. So you can have discussion again. Once the motion's on the table, then you need to act on it fairly quickly. It's, you know...
We can move this and go to discussion right away.
So, um, or you could...
Gary has a question.
Does that mean the other board members can't work with Mike?
No.
No, not at all.
No.
I wouldn't say so.
That, I, that's one thing I think we are, you may have missed on, that all six of us have said that we'd be able to work with either candidate. We'd be thrilled to have either...
Happy to work with the other candidate.
I just, I just support Gary at this point.
You wanna c- continue without the other?
All right. Okay, so Robert.
Robert's rules, uh, motion to commit or refer to committing with the other.
Maybe we can move this forward and say, we're, we're not going to decide anything tonight.
Right.
We're going to push the process.
Yeah.
I don't believe that's...
So...
I don't think that's in the best interest of the...
I, I don't either. So that said, uh, because it is legal for the chair to make the motion, I would like to, uh, make the motion to offer Gary Ainger, um, as interim superintendent through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, subject to the parties mutually agreeing, um, the interim superintendent contract and authorize the Director of Human Resources to negotiate a mutually agreeable contract within the salary range that has been established for this position.
I will second.
All right, discussion.
I'm trying to find the path to changing my mind. I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I did go back and forth and, and for Tony, Sean and I, when did we first talk with both of these gentlemen? Three, four weeks ago?
Yeah.
And we've talked to several others and it, um, you know, they were clearly fantastic candidates. I'm thrilled with both of them. Um, I just, it's, it's not a strong leaning. It really is a, you know, fifty-one, forty-nine, but it's, I just, I just, my guts tell me that, on top of my head, that I, I think Mike's the better candidate.
And my guts tell me we gotta take care of the people first or nothing else matters.
That's why I disagree. I think Michael do a very good job.
I don't think a vote for Mike is not a vote for our employees. That's not fair.
I, that's, that's how I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it again, taking the feedback that I've heard and what I know our needs to be, and I see a nice blend there where the two are going to work very well together. Our needs and what he brings to the table based on, uh, the enormous amount of feedback. Any other discussion?
Can we take a break?
No, not yet. We're gonna move this.
Not yet.
Okay, um, we're in a discussion, then we will go ahead. All those in favor of this second motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Oh, that's funny. Okay, so officially now...
Right.
We have by our action here, we have moved this on to committee, correct?
Um, you, you want to...
No.
You have to move to it, but that would be, could be a step. Could be the next. Can we have some more discussion?
Can we take a break?
You can recess.
What would we recess for?
So, like you said?
Oh, very nice. All right, let's take a short recess. We recess, and as the first order of business back to recess, I would respectfully like to renew the motion that I made earlier, which again was, um, that we make the offer to, here, after we read it again.
Yeah, I think you should. Yes, please. Sorry.
I would like to go ahead.
We, sorry, we can't have discussion without a motion on the table?
It, it sounded as though that someone was ready to make the motion.
We can discuss again if you like. Otherwise, I'd like to...
I think we can discuss and see if we can change a mind or two without having a motion on the table because then we'd have to vote that down and then make a different motion. You know what I mean? Like that's...
I will yield to Matt McCain's opinion. Not to get a bit preferential, not having a motion.
Just reading through, you know, the materials that we have, um, you know, one of the people that I have come to be impressed with is Patty Phillips, the former superintendent in, in, uh, Norris St. Paul. And just what she said about Mike when, um, when he became the principal at, at John Glenn. He took the helm of one of our schools with a culture that lacked trust because he has skills at liberating the ideas, energy, and capacities of others, and has admirable people skills, astute insight, and approachable demeanor. Mike was able to success, successfully transform the culture of this school to one where staff felt supported and were willing to take risks and work in trust and partnership to attain positive results. That's, again, it's, it's an external reference point. I don't know that, you know, now there's no Patty that well, but that's, it, in, in my deliberations over the weekend, it was so easy for me just to lay, label Gary as the healer and not Mike. And it's quotes like that that made me say, no, Mike's also a healer and a culture builder. And if we say that those two are close, and then I lean more in the strategic capabilities of Mike, you know, I, I feel pretty strongly that Mike's the better, better fit for us.
Who was at the school, or is it like sixty percent diverse community or...
John Glenn? Yeah, I believe so.
Mary, can I ask you the same question you asked us? Do you think you can't work with Gary?
I can work with him. But I'll probably work with Mike.
Any other discussion? You look like you're ready to say so.
Do you wanna go through the options then?
Sure, that'd be fine.
So, but simple majority vote. Three, three, tie, fails. You could, you could, uh, do a motion to refer this to committee. You could, um, postpone action till the next meeting. Or you can continue to discuss it, work, and stay here.
Can you tell me when our next meeting is? I don't know. But, like...
When we tell August thirtieth?
August, August eighteenth?
Oh, wow, that's great. You can call a special meeting, please. With a proper notice, you could call a special meeting.
With all due respect, we call the special meeting for this...
Yeah.
But I don't know that I'd wanna call it alone.
And it has to release another week if we're hoping for Reggie to come back to at least that non-number.
Right. Right. He's not back till Sunday, I believe.
I think we've got a lot of things going on right now. And, uh, somebody's sitting here, we, we'd like to, I'll focus, uh, on his building, um, too, so. I think we need to solve it tonight.
Item two. Based on that, again, I would like to renew the motion that I made prior to our little break.
After you read that motion, are we allowed to have a discussion?
Sure. We can, we can talk some more. Do I actually need to read that?
Yeah, I would like you to.
Okay, again, rewind it. This time with spirit.
Different motion.
Scott Swanson will move to offer Gary Ainger as interim superintendent through June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, subject to the parties mutually agreeing on interim superintendent contract and authorizes the Director of Human Resources to negotiate a mutually agreeable contract within the salary range that has been established for the position. And that, now we need a second.
Yes, please.
Second.
Second by Tony. Now we can have discussion.
So I'll say this. I came here with no decision made when I walked in the door. I have preference. We cannot leave here tonight without something. So, because I am a team player, I will lean towards Gary so we can... That's what I want to say.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I will accept flowers and thank you cards tomorrow.
Okay, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, nay?
Nay. Can we still have comments or not?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. We're, we're good now. I will say that motion carries third time's a charm. Actually, I don't think you have, I don't know. So, thank you, Angela. And again, I wanna say this, though, we all agreed when we started this conversation that everybody echoed, everybody else, that we would work with either one of these individuals. I, I'm okay that people have leans. I still feel the same way that I did when we started this, and that is that these are two exceptionally qualified people.
That's, that's exactly what I was just gonna say. Excited to move forward with Gary. And I think he'll do great things for our district and for the city in that.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for sticking around for all that. Um, okay, now we are going to go ahead and adjourn, and we will take about a fifteen minute break because we do have a little bit of HR work that we need to do quickly, and then we will re-emerge at, uh, wait, five, eight, seven? Seven? Okay. We are adjourned.
I need a wait.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'm so excited to be here.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Matt, Tony?
Tony.
Matt, Tony, okay.
If you have a second sign, I say aye.
Aye.
If you have a second sign, we're now here. Okay. Back at it.
Seven twenty-five.
Seven twenty-five. I would like to call this, uh, Shackville School Board Learning Session to order. Um, Sarah, you please take a roll, you?
Okay.
We got, we got somebody not here?
Yes, uh, Mary had to excuse herself.
Okay.
So we have one.
Just checking. Um, I'm gonna take roll. Bowerman, Hallid.
Here.
McCain.
Still here.
Us.
Here.
Romansky, Tucker.
Here.
And Swanson.
Good evening. All right, item seven, we're gonna consider the agenda as presented. No additions at this point. Uh, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Matt, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you have a second sign, motion carries. Jump right to seven point one, Education Forward Strategic Plan Update by Nancy Tool and...
Special guest.
And, and the band is...
Well, good evening, everyone. I, I'm excited about tonight, and I'm excited that our principals are with us because, um, for us, I think we could say that we've been on sort of a multi-year journey to completing a multi, uh, or a, a multi-level plan at, uh, for elementary, middle school, and the high school over the last three years. And the final piece is kinda coming into place, um, with the recommendations that are specific to the middle level, um, as well as to the elementary. And so one of the things that I wanted to do just in starting tonight is to just talk a little bit about the effort we've made over the last few years, uh, and some of the work that has taken, uh, place to date, just briefly. Um, and then the bulk of our presentation is actually just Q and A, allowing you to ask questions of our principals and myself and, and Ed Cox, who's here for the middle school version, too, and Nika, who will meet here when we bring up the elementary, um, about what are the recommendations? What does that mean? How would that change things over time, et cetera? So, one of the things I wanted to reference, I put it in the packet, and you should have a packet like this, and I just wanna say, in Board Book, when it uploaded, you were having, and T and L was having a tough time with their scanner at the end of last week. And so it sort of was leaning a little bit, and so I wanted to just make sure that, um, you got a nice copy that was clean to, to refer to. Um, but really, um, from the work we did with the secondary academic design team, we really shifted our mission a little bit, um, as a district over three years ago, to really look at, and if you look in that piece and bold, to make sure that all of our students are college and career ready with a kind of a systems, uh, approach in mind that would enhance and align our academic programs from high school, middle school, and elementary. And much of the, the secondary work actually started, uh, a few years ago around the academy model, but it also, a, a fair amount of redesign has happened at the middle level as well, which is why you'll see that, um, the action plan for the middle level is of a shorter time window because a lot of that is about transitioning to true middle schools that are grade six, seven, and eight. Um, and so a fair amount of work has already started at the secondary level. We've been doing some good work at elementary, but you'll see a little more comprehensive, um, recommendations for our elementary group with a longer timeframe up to around that five-year window. And so, uh, just to kinda remind everyone, because it's kind of amazing in terms of the work that we've done, I included a timeline in your packet of kind of some major watershed things that we had done over the last few years and, and how many people were really involved. So if you look at the timeline that is in the introduction, it really does highlight all the various groups that were involved in the work. But starting with at the very top, and I'm just gonna say, I have to, uh, say that the contributor slide here is from Dave Olowski, he's so good at pulling all these things together. But it really started with the work that we did as a secondary academic design team. And from that, we did some revision of our strategic direction, which you see in that middle portion, and that led to sort of the, that view that we have now of Education Forward and the, the piece that's really at the front of your handout, which is a rolled-up version of the six pillars of what we're working on as a district. And when you look at those six, six pillars, I just wanna kinda pull, call them out individually. It's quality, instruction, and student engagement, whole student development, personalized learning, culture of excellence, twenty-first century learning environment, and excellence with equity. Those are our full, uh, six pillars. And so what you're gonna see as we dive into the recommendations tonight is that you should be able to see a, a clear correlation, uh, between the recommendations and matching and matching to one of these six pillars. They're all, there was a lot of time spent within our core teams at the elementary and middle level looking at this work and how can we align to this work as well as align as a system from a program point of view, E through twelve plus, as Sean talked about earlier. And so that was really the charge that you had given these groups, starting about a year and a half ago, was to kind of bring us into a system alignment, ensuring that all kids can be college. And when we use the word college, we really mean post-secondary program of their choice. Because sometimes when you say college, people assume that's a four-year university. So that post-secondary transition will be seamless. In order to do that, you can't just change one part of the system. You actually, long-term, have to work from the minute they enter our doors all the way through plus. And so that's what a lot of our work has been. We've had lots of people involved, starting with the secondary design team all the way through, working on high school committees, middle school committees, elementary committees. It's been a variety of teachers, staff, administrators, community members, board members over the last three years. And to me, this is kind of the final step of that strategic plan, is now we've kind of finalized the work that we want to pursue, finishing up some of the work at the middle level as well as then continuing kind of our journey at the elementary. So with that in mind, what I wanted to do is just to point out, I want to get off of this, actually, is to just point out the layout of the document. If you notice there, you'll see that the middle school recommendations are first. And you'll notice that there are six. There's a shorter, as I mentioned earlier, timeframe where we think much of the implementation will take us into the fall of eighteen and then some specific things that we want to work on spring of two thousand nine and beyond. So there are six recommendations there. And what I thought I wanted to do is to reserve the bulk of the time to just let you dive into that and to ask us questions, starting with the middle school first. And then when you're finished with your questions for middle school, we'll transition into the elementary team. So this kind of again closes that loop with a full strategic plan at all levels. Two things I'd say before we turn it over to Q and A. Action plans are always just working documents. They are subject to change based on new needs arising. And they are also subject to budget. So that always means that as we project forward, and the board knows, because we do this every year, we project to do the work that might be happening in teaching and learning, and that there's a budget attached to that. And that can change from year to year. And if it means we need to go slower, we go slower, or whatever the budget, the priorities that you might have for the budget come first. So these are always sort of working targets that we use to help guide our work. So with that, I'm gonna open up questions for middle school recommendations.
So I have a question that is middle school and elementary, and it's on recommendation number one about the E eight social-emotional curriculum, the whole multi-tiered piece. Is there, are these two unique assessments and two unique tools? Or could they potentially be the same solution for both elementary and?
So what happened naturally and organically within the committee is that both of them identified similar needs at each level around social-emotional framework and then some of the multi-tiered systems of support. And once we realized that, we kind of got all the administration together and talked about it. The priorities and timing were slightly different based on need at the each level, but we were all in agreement that we needed to work on it together, E eight. And so that's why you see reference in both plans that it will be an E eight committee to help us build the framework and make some of those decisions.
In here, you have the fall of twenty seventeen, defining multi-tiered systems of support. Can you, what is that process and what, what is a multi-tiered system of support?
So that's a reference to RTI. I'm gonna look at Jim and Lori, see if they want to address that and talk about that.
Sure. Multi-tiered system supports would be a general RTI model. We're looking at wanting to support seventy percent of students just with mainstream general curriculum that everyone receives, looking at the fact that the remaining thirty percent need something additional. It could be an intervention class, it could be an extra support class, it could be something that takes place during the period at the middle level. And then there are some students who need an additional boost, which would be special services after assessment. So it's trying to provide that support in a systemic way so it's guaranteed across all our elementaries, all of our middle schools. There's a natural ebb and flow to it, and we have consistent people across all buildings involved in the case of work.
I think the goal too is that what we know is that the more we can identify and deal with those interventions within the classroom, the less there is a need to, that's kind of the tier one, it's kind of the big broad base, the less there is a need to move kids to more intensive assistance, which is like tier two and tier three, so.
One challenge I think that the secondary is trying to be systemic about it and making sure that you're reaching all kids and you know, you guys, and it's a reference to a system for all students and having something really structured and purposeful is really important with any kind of intervention with this behavior or academic.
I think the other piece I'd add to that is we're all doing it. We're just not necessarily doing it in a line and systemic sort of way.
Yeah.
Could you explain to a solid of our, that what it means to be research-based for tier one? If we expect to get eighty-five percent of our students through that, and it's expected to be research-based instruction?
Right, so it's training a lot and to some degree in terms of making sure our classroom teachers have kind of the tools in their toolkit to do appropriate intervention. But one of the positive things about moving to the modified block or even the block in the high school is it does allow for more time and a longer periods of instruction to do some of the whole group and then to try to work with small group or individuals during that time as well. But it's a variety of strategies to try to intervene with kids who are struggling. And then identifying which ones we want to do the most training on. And that's part of what that define is about.
Is the committee E through A staff, I assume? Or is there community members?
We haven't had that conversation, you know, quite frankly, as anything. And we will make, have this conversation too at the end as well as, you know, this we assume you'll give us feedback on. If you want us to tweak something, we tweak it, that kind of thing. I don't know if you want to go through a formal approval process of this report or if you just want to give us governance to go ahead. But we're not that far into the weeds yet on what the committee will look like other than we all agreed it makes sense that it'd be a representative group from, you know, early childhood through eighth grade.
My thought on that would be that this is where we would provide governance and not get in the weeds on this because you are way smarter than I'll ever be at any of this stuff, so.
One piece that I want us to definitely talk about with the middle level is if you've noticed, we've talked about that modified block schedule, which you gave us direction on sometime this last school year. Lori and Jim have done some work on taking a look at how that would be implemented from a daily schedule point of view. And they have a handout that I'd like them to share with you to just kind of talk about how that might look.
What you're getting is a handout with two graphics along the side that I'm gonna let you look at a little bit. I'll give you a little bit of time to look at it. And then some information along the side that Jim's gonna talk through. Modified block, just to remind you, is kind of a combination of regular seven-period days. So those regular seven-period days are similar to what we have now with a daily advisory period. And they're represented on those graphics with the letter R. Stripped in there are block days where we kind of take that seven-period day and we stretch it out over two days, having periods one through four and then five through seven. But it also creates an opportunity for us to have an eighth block. And again, longer class periods over one day, spread out over two, and allows our teachers to go a little bit deeper. So on those two graphics, the top one is they're really the same thing. They're just represented for the majority of our classes, our everyday classes. So you'll see that regular day, regular day, regular day, regular day. And then the last two days in that six-day cycle is that block day divided over two days. The majority of our classes will follow this, so it's a six-day cycle. Below that is a representation for our every-other-day classes. We have a number of every-other-day classes, band music, some specialized classes, some of our study house classes, that kind of stuff. But we have to have a schedule that accommodates those every-other-day classes as well. So this six-day cycle is really a twelve-day cycle for an every-other-day class. And so they would have a regular one, regular two. The reason for the twelve-day cycle is to give some consistency to that meeting pattern for those every-other-day classes and allow them to have the benefit of the block period as well as have that frequency of meeting time and consistency that we want for special, for hallers.
I guess when we talk about the modified block, and I know we talked about it earlier this year, I've done some more research, we've had some more things come to light. I'm just wondering, what's the difference in our cost and efficiency between a seven-period day and a modified block? Is it more expensive, is it less expensive?
Zero on this because it's really scheduled like a seven-period day. So the teachers would still pay, or still teach five of the seven. There's a little bit of a cost saving in the new schedule at the high school because they teach, would teach six out of eight. So that's a little more efficient.
But this is the same as a seven-period day? So what you're saying is that, and I'm throwing it out, I'm just wondering if there's cost savings at the high school? Would there be, the cost is not going to drive it, but would there be benefits doing an AV block at the middle too? Or is that just too long a period for the eight?
So that core team, if you remember, we did a report, we wrestled with that. It came down to looking at the high school schedule, looking at just staying with the straight seven, and then looking at this modified block. And that group was kind of, if Tony was sitting on that group, they were kind of split in a variety of ways. But I think the majority came back with wanting that modified block so that they'd have some time every day and then some block time. I think there was a lot of concern on the part of the core team about not seeing kids as frequently. Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, it's in the first bullet point. It just indicated that we're concerned about the frequency of meeting to build relationships for teams and then provide remediation and enrichment on a regular basis. When you go to an AV block, you can see kids, you know, when you put in a Friday and then a weekend, I mean, you can easily go, you know, four or five days when there's a missed day of school without seeing a particular kid. And at the middle level, that's just far more challenging than the high school level when they don't, you know, when they're going through a lot of those social-emotional changes and they just, they need to see their teachers on a regular basis.
Especially with the complication of the every-other-day classes. It would be four days between meeting times for adolescent or middle-level learners. That's quite a long time.
At a week, and that's six days.
Yeah.
So you're saying it's worth the extra money to do this as opposed to doing the AV block?
I think that the teachers who worked on that committee really felt like this was offered the best of both worlds. That frequency of meeting time as well as the opportunity to go deeper and provide some authentic learning experiences. I really like the eighth period. I have been, you know, over the years, you hear about school districts implementing just unique social-emotional type programming that maybe doesn't fit into a traditional schedule. And some of those looks pretty powerful. And I love the idea of having dedicated time for social-emotional work in our schools too. So I really appreciate that eighth period.
Yeah, an interesting thing on both core teams, both middle school and elementary, that was in their minds, the number one thing that we were missing was sort of that social-emotional framework. And so it was interesting that two separate groups kind of came to the same place in terms of priority.
So will the, this is just six, eight. So will the middle core then get to look at some options for some of that curriculum for social-emotional?
So a social-emotional framework is a combination, it can be some programming-like curriculum. I'd actually say that, and this will be what this group will have to tackle, this E eight group, that a lot of it, I would argue, is training, actually, with teachers. And so when you look at programming that's out there, it's kind of a combination of both curriculum and professional development.
So I like the whole thing, one question would just be what, what, if any, obstacles are out there that prevent you from being successful with all this stuff?
With regard to the block that we have here, we just want to be clear. It's a six, you know, I think there's a temptation to want block days to be a particular day of the week. However, when you look at a school calendar, there's no day of the week that you don't miss at some point. And so then it comes down to, you know, you, your classes get spread out in different places. I think the biggest obstacle with the schedule piece right now is just communicating with parents and getting parents to recognize, you know, a long, you know, it shouldn't be the parent's job. However, making sure that the kids end up in the right places on the block days, which it's not uncommon for districts to be on some type of a rotating schedule, a numbered schedule. And quite frankly, I've watched kindergartners learn on six-day cycles. So I think we'll get middle schoolers there in about the same amount of time.
Typically, the kids pick it up quickly and it's the adults. No, it's true, it's the adults that typically struggle, both teachers and parents, right?
I would say a lot of our elementaries are already on some sort of cycle. Yes, they are. And so they're probably more useful than our teachers.
I think, go ahead.
Well, my next question's not necessarily about the block, so if you want to keep talking, I can overthrow.
So I think they're just wanting to make sure you're comfortable with knowing it wouldn't be. Because we know other districts, Easton Carver is one of them, that has stand set aside days. It's always Wednesday, Thursday, that kind of thing. Especially with our every-other-day component, I think they felt pretty strongly and the core agreed that we probably need a rotation. And that we wanted to make sure that was clear so that wouldn't be a surprise to you.
My questions are on the authentic learning and grading shift. That's something we're gonna get a lot more information about and have further dialogue about it on the board.
Yeah. Now that, that has sort of yet to get takeoff from a district perspective because we're working on some other elements first, like the SABR plan and the E portfolio and that type of thing. There is some work that's been happening at the elementary that we'll talk about next because there's a specific recommendation in theirs around assessment. But it is our assumption that sometime in this next kind of three-to-five-year window, we'll come to some consensus about what I would call it, call more uniform grading practices district-wide. But we're not, we haven't been in a position to really start that whole district-wide conversation yet.
Okay, good. So I saw the professional development schedule for this fall.
Show me, tell me what.
I'm crossing the authen, uh, recommendation too. Maybe I'm going between authentic learning and the grading.
Oh, no, authentic learning is like project-based learning.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I've heard that called authentic.
Performance, there's some performance assessment kinds of components there, and that's just like rubrics. But that gets translated into traditional grades, that kind of thing. So the authentic learning has to do with, if you look at the very end of the packet, remember that the district instructional framework that you approved a while back? Authentic learning is one of the four critical strategies, teaching strategies, that we want all teachers to possess. And so if you read that definition, that's what we're alluding to, that we're starting training on that project-based, problem-based kind of authentic learning.
I was hung up on that branding because I'd heard the grading was a big part of that. It's one way from another, and so I want to make sure we didn't jump there without having a process.
Yeah. Performance assessment is certainly part of project-based learning because when you do that, you have to have a way in a more subjective way with rubrics, et cetera, to take a look at performance or products. But it's not like standards, if you're thinking that's like standards-based grading, that kind of thing, there's, that's a separate thing.
Thank you for pointing out.
The other thing I guess I just want to call out on the middle level is the recommendation around personalized learning because you might have some questions at some. some point about, for example, as you know, we've been doing some team work at Kevin's building, Pearson with the Explorer team around personalization. So if you take a look at that recommendation, which I think is number two, I kinda opened up. Just if, you can see that in conversations with the core team and with our administration, there was a feeling that we needed to kinda get everybody together in the same buildings, you know, six, seven and eight, and really make sure everybody's kinda comfortable with some of the work we're trying to, to do around personalized learning and build their new teams because either they're gonna be in a team for the first time, or they're gonna be in different teams than they have missed, probably been in the past. And a lot of that more personalized learning models grow once you have a synergy within a team, kinda like we saw with the Explorers. So it's sort of, we're gonna try to just build that foundation first and then you can kinda see, starting in the fall of eighteen and then more in nineteen, starting to kinda take a look at some of those options for families if we wanna push a little further on things like multi age, grouping, um, options for same, you know, different families, continuous progress, that's another one that you see emerging now as well. So that's kinda down the line a little bit.
Big fan of the Explorers work. My daughter was a object, object, and my oldest stepdaughter starts its fault, so I'm interested to hear a second point of view.
Yeah, and you know, I think for us too, we find that, that type of work that is best done organically, building up from, I think, a team perspective. I don't know if you guys want to add?
I, you know, ideally in my fantasy world, we have, you know, teachers kind of offering personalized experiences in, in every classroom. Maybe we eventually get to the point where the Explorers are where it's kind of a, a really student led approach from start to finish, but, um, you know, I, I don't wanna wait for it to get there before it starts. We wanna encourage some innovation and some trying in, in all of our classrooms and having teachers work with, maybe outside of a team but in their department, maybe interdisciplinary thing to try out some of these things with authentic learning approaches to personalize instruction as best we can. We wanna get everybody to, I think we were talking about getting everybody to the floor and then taking out the ceiling.
And you know, with the, the framework we've built, you know, if our teachers within the next three to five years are very comfortable with these core strategies, they are personalized learning. And so then it's just like, what's available to us beyond that? And, and that's really what the framework is about. Any other questions for middle school? All right, I, yeah, I just want to thank the core team members. I, I didn't wanna ask our teachers to come out since you're on summer, but they, they've been a great.
Worked hard.
Yeah, they have worked hard and we had a few stops and starts and had to take some breaks that were longer than intended, so I just wanna thank them as well as our, our principals and others that were a part of that team process.
Thank you.
Yeah, really good work, thank you guys.
All right, now elementary.
Don't call you? Turn the ring on.
I think you know everybody here. And we have to include Kevin too. Like Kevin's gotta be on everything, both at the secondary elementary is. But we have eight recommendations for elementary. The timeframe is much longer, that's delivered, as you know, we've been doing some ongoing work with each grade level with all day K. In fact, I'm excited to say, and Nick and I were talking about this this morning, but we just launched the third grade institute this week, and this is our fourth summer of following those all day K kids and having the same conversation we have with every, every, with them every year, and that's don't underestimate this group, you know, because we don't want the fate effect and, and you'll be surprised by what they can do. And so, you know, it's been fun to be able to do that, and, and so we've been kinda rolling up with those kids, but at the same time, there are some things we wanna work on as a total elementary program, and that'll be a more longer term vision as we're winding up some of our, and finalizing some of the work we're doing at, at the secondary in the next couple of years, that we'll be able to go deeper into our work at the elementary as we kinda add one and start adding the other. So that's why you see a five year plan instead of a shorter plan with the, the middle school. So now, any questions that you have?
So I'll jump to number six. Is it fair to say that this plays off of a meeting we had?
Yes.
Some six months ago or something, where we started kicking around potential ideas?
Yes.
Are you gonna go back to the drawing board or are you gonna use the list of ideas we had at that meeting as your springboard to work from?
You know, I think because we won't start until eighteen, nineteen, we'll probably go more back to the drawing board and take a look at where we're at at that time. I think our group felt at that time that it was important to get a pulse on where the community's at in terms of what kind of specialized program options they'd be the most interested. When you do this work, it is, it is driven by choice, so you wanna make sure that the choice that you're giving them is something they'll actually select. And so I think that's probably where we'd start. We certainly have heard, I've certainly heard since my first day here, that probably language is the most common one that we hear about from parents in terms of reasons they may opt to go somewhere else or just what they'd like to see us to do to be more, you know, competitive, comparable. So it'll be interesting to see where we go with that. But as you know, we discussed this one a while back and decided it was important to put it on hold till we sort of have everybody in their new locations and are ready more to start to turn, you know, turn our attention to those options, so.
For number seven, um, let me talk about, um, physical space that match the learning environment. What exactly do you mean by that?
So that's actually alluded to as well in the middle school plan. So as you get more personalized and you try to do more authentic learning, rows and desks, static desks become more difficult for a teacher to use. And so one of the things you see, like Almuzi Dyna as an example, put into a capital campaign, and there's other districts too, to over time, trade out their traditional furniture for more flexible furniture that's easy to move around and configure in a variety of ways so that you can do instruction differently. It's certainly something we're working on doing as part of the work at the high school, and it would be something that we would want to see kind of aligned E twelve over time. So some, you know, some of the things we could talk about is a long range capital plan to maybe make that happen. To be honest, our principals are already working on that, I said Mitch's building where his, his building's, because I had been, the custodian was showing me how he can take the legs off tables and put on new legs with casters, and that was making me happy, so. Because that was so creative. No, he and I liked each other a lot. So there's creative solutions. But Lori and Jim and others, Melissa and others have already offered up their own building funds to start working on that. But you know, it's, in fairness to our teachers, we're asking them to teach differently, and then in some cases, we have very controlled, traditional furniture that just makes it hard to operate differently because you're trying to build small groups, little groups, individuals, and in the case of the high school, extending out beyond the classroom into resource areas, our elementaries, our newer elementaries have some of that pod look as well. Are we maximizing the use of that? You all enjoyed this conversation too, so I'll let you join in. But I know Josie has done some work and obviously Mitch's custodian's doing work for us, so.
Well, even today when Nika was talking, the third grade group, during their training today, just the difference when I was an elementary teacher, you'd get into your classroom and the first thing you do is set up those rows of desks. Basically, it's completely flip flop, and that important area, the area that you put the most priority in is that floor space and then that teaching area where a lot, a lot of teaching went on in desks way back when I was teaching, it, it's really changed as far as kids being on the floor, and to be honest, desks are quickly getting to be the last priority as far as teachers. It's a place to store stuff right now more than anything, so that kinda falls into this one too.
Thinking about the needs of the kids too, as far as their independent or collaborative work time, not all of them will want a desk or need a desk. I know you talked about today how just sitting on the floor is how you work, and so thinking about how do kids work and is the desk what makes sense for them? So, do we need twenty five desks in our room? Maybe not.
Well, no, and before you needed a hard surface so that the pencil didn't go through the paper.
Now we have devices. We need places to project to and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
It really gets back to that pillar that's on the twenty first century learning environment, you know, and, and there's really no market for static desks anymore. I mean, this is something we've talked about with Bold and Tim, so just over time, we'd like to be able to address that issue.
And it's not only furniture though, it's also the spaces that we have, how might we use those differently or how might we reconfigure those even?
And that's what I was wondering actually when I asked the question was.
Because we, you know, the elementary, we have those cluster classrooms, and people are not using those.
Uh huh, no.
You know, to the degree that we could, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of possibility.
Yeah. Lot of possibility, cool.
And I would say for the buildings that don't have the clusters, to think about how can we maybe better use some of the open space or reconfigure some of the space to make it more usable and collaborative? So what can we do with what we have or tweak?
The, I think the most important part of the recommendation though is at the bottom of eighteen, nineteen, around professional development around personalized learning.
Yes.
So to really have people on board with what does that mean and what could that look like, so that we can start to develop those spaces and provide the furniture needs of it.
Do you, do you see any challenges with getting people on board to go in that direction?
As, as with any change, there's always those that are done old, and there's those waiting sees and those, you're not gonna make me do that ever, you know? So yeah, there'll be challenges, but I, I think, I look at our elementary staff and the, the kind of people that are on that core planning team, you know, what can we do that's best for kids? And when you put it that way, you have people that are on board and say, I wanna try this.
I think the, the students and the appro, different approaches we're taking to instruction will drive a lot of the physical part of the room. You know, we're saying kids need to engage and, and principals have been, have been going into classrooms and watching engagement as much as possible, and it's just so much easier when two kids are sitting on the floor compared to when two kids are sitting at a desk. And so the instructional models that we're, that we're focusing on are going to make this physical transition a lot easier. I think teachers are gonna buy it pretty quickly.
I think some of the things that we're doing with lab classrooms in K two, we're getting a lot of video footage because it's one thing to talk about it, I think there are people that stand back, stand back in fear of the change. So we already have teachers doing really amazing things with their spaces at Pearson and seven, eight, nine, and we've done some work of showing that at the elementary level, so we're building excitement around it, which, I mean, you have teachers going to you all the time asking for tables, or can I have different heights of tables in my room? I mean, I think we just keep playing on that organic movement.
Right, and I echo what Lori said earlier, I don't wanna wait till everything's in place and perfect, we wanna get going and get excited with those on that.
The good news is, is when they ask for a different physical structure, that means they're using the strategies, otherwise they would never ask. So those are all integrated.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's because the physical space has become a hindrance to them, that, that's why they ask, so.
Do they engage their kids in the room to say, hey, what do you guys, gals think we should do differently? Are you getting a scouting perspective too?
I think what, what I've observed is teachers allowing kindergartners, first graders to try out different ways of learning. Um, you know, do you work best playing on the floor? Do you work best sitting at, at a, a table, like they lower it all the way down so they're physically sitting on the floor and then they have that hard surface? Do you work best standing up? And just like you were saying before about it being a foundation, how they learn and empowering them to have some choice in that? They have to learn that when they're young to be able to utilize it and actually apply it when they're older, so I, I see more and more of that.
Well, and I can see just speaking for my work, there is an individual who has a raised desk, who has a treadmill, and he runs while he's working. We've got everything from the standard desk to that, so it's, there's no question that is in fact reality in the business community, the center. I don't run, of course. Can I get one else so I won't use it there? It's like one of them.
We're doing it here with raises and we're starting. But I think if you kinda look at the pattern of the recommendations, you see some similarities obviously to the middle level around social emotional and some of the schoolwide management systems. And you see some references to things we've already been working on, like recommendation two is the writing workshop, if you remember, we kinda highlighted that with some of our lab teachers in a report that we did a while back, but the multi tiered systems report is in there, and then, you know, continuing kind of the work around the district instructional framework. But we are doing, and I just wanna make sure you remember that, because Matt had asked a question earlier, we actually have sort of a standards based rubric that we've been doing with each grade level that started with K. And so standards based grading is kinda typical at the elementary level. Where it gets to be a little interesting is when you make the conversion to upper grade levels, and I don't know where we'll go with that, but we have felt, and our principals can speak to this too, that we've had a lot of positive feedback about report card changes we've made with each grade level. And I just wanna make sure you are aware of that too, because you see some reference in recommendation five, that we'll continue to roll that out through grade five, and at that point, kinda take a pause until we see kinda what's happening district wide to see if there's any tweaking that needs to happen. But I don't know if you guys wanna talk about some of those report card changes and how parents have, have looked at that.
I think just the clarity and expectation, not only for the parents, they see what the kids need, where they need to go, but for teachers as well. When it was rolled out, it was rolled out to our group of kindergartners, all day K, so the, some of the parents didn't know it differently. Some maybe had older children, but some, this was just new. So we, honestly, I haven't heard a lot, a lot of complaints or concern, actually none.
And I, I think that it's, it's one thing at the elementary level, right? Because I didn't have a letter grade until, um, fifth grade, and unfortunately of the wrong letters. But it, it, it would be a substantive, yeah, like the second grade.
Yeah.
Second grade, yes, but so I, I think more study and more discussion is needed, but that doesn't mean I'm opposed to it. All right. Do you have else for our team?
No, I just am so impressed at how thoughtful all of this is and the work that these teams have done.
Now I just gotta do it.
Huh?
Now I have to do it.
Yeah. I don't worry about that part.
You plan to work on that second point?
Honestly, I don't worry about that part.
To me, again, I think what's exciting is it's sort of the last piece of the puzzle coming together, because we have now action plans in place at all levels. As you know, we have a high school master plan for implementing the academies at the high school, so this is now kinda that counterpoint. So this is now kind of that counterpoint at the middle level and at the elementary level. And what I think is exciting is that we are working towards system alignment, because I'm just gonna say, I don't think that happens in all that many school districts. And, and I'm also excited about the number of people that we've had involved. We've had lots of groups, sometimes almost too many groups if you wanted to argue anything. But we have had lots of teachers involved, lots of administration, lots of community over a variety of, of issues in this area. And so, it's just exciting to me to see it all kind of come full circle, I guess I would say.
I'm just happy to see these again.
Yeah, they're great.
Been a long time, and I'll be honest, been a little distracted lately, so it's really nice to be reminded that, oh yeah, that's right, there's a lot of really good things.
And that there's action plans around it, yeah.
So, thank you for the friendly reminder.
Yeah, and Dave and I would be happy to come back and, you know, we have some updating that probably should happen with the vision cards. And then we usually have an internal operational, like just an annual plan that's more at the district level. So, maybe at a future burn session, once we have hopefully our new superintendent on line, we'll be able to come back and kind of work on some of those pieces too. With that, that if elementary want to add anything, otherwise I want to say the same thing, thank you to our elementary principals and our elementary staff who helped. I do have just a short progress report on the high school master plan, that's just a one-page document. I just wanted to do a quick check-in, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Jeff, uh, thank you. Jeff Pellecky couldn't be here tonight, and you know, his excuse was his daughter's birthday. Seems like a good excuse. So, and, and he and I just talked briefly, this is sort of just really almost like a checklist of where we're at. And each, if you remember, the, the master plan is written in these six tactical areas. And this is sort of a progress report to date of what we've, we've accomplished so far. So again, I would just say to Angela and Scott, you were both right, we have plans in place, it is a lot. But I am confident we can work with our new superintendent and keep the ball rolling and, and good things will continue to happen. So I don't know if you have any questions about that one-page document or not.
Can you give a guess how many hours it took to make this one document? Take that away, it'd be very entertaining, very easy to summarize it here and forget that the amount of effort behind getting these is significant.
Yeah, and I think because we're doing something that's not typical, it's always a little bit interesting when you're sort of designing while you're flying the plane at the same time and, and, but I would say that it's exciting work when you go to the high school and you see what's happening there. It's, we're, we're going the right direction and, and I think, you know, we have a good plan in place that will get us where we need to be at all three levels. What I'd like to remind everybody is that we do have transition, major transition happening at all three levels. Pearson will open as an elementary school with Kevin as our principal. East and West will be bringing sixth grade and transitioning ninth grade to the high school, and then we'll have a nine-twelve high school. So, there's a lot happening in this year, but it's, it's good work and it's gonna get us to where we want to be and kind of what our vision has always been. Great, thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're very deep. Okay, seven point two, Dave Orlovsky. Your best thirty seconds, Abe. I wasn't even there, I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Cameron Uvala-Richard or Porter?
Nancy Wentz.
Nancy Wentz.
I was very generous with when I stopped the clock. So this could be very quick depending on if you had chats to, to book. Depending which, if you want those three, one A, two A, and two B to go to the, as the starting points for the task force. If you are comfortable with those, and then I did put some other explanatory information in there. If you're comfortable with those, that's good, and I, then while you're kind of catching up, I have what will happen once we decide those. If you say good to go, that I will send the invitations out for the task force tomorrow, giving them a summary of what we have going and attaching some information. By Wednesday, Ashley and Crystal will have the website up. We focused on the attendance area project that will include a description of the task force, the really introductory beginnings of a FAQ on that, and then the draft scenarios. I think we would put those out there and make sure it's clear that these are starting points for the discussion.
Right.
And then I do have just something that we're gonna share. This is just some, a document that's gonna describe to the task force what their role is. You know, Matt, there's probably enough there to come up. I'll pop that up here, so that is, this is the document that you're seeing right there, kind of the goals of the group, a restatement of the guidelines, what we're looking for in our members, and just a reminder again at the bottom that this group is helping us craft the message, not pick the scenario, but maybe help make the starting points we have better and, and provide that kind of initial feedback. I have representation from all the schools, I'm missing, I think, one from one of the schools and I'm still waiting on a, a daycare provider. But the city, the board members, administrators, all our schools, communications, all represented up there, so.
So, I was, uh, quick question, so these groups that you have in here that we've been looking at for a number of weeks now, all just talk about the projected opening, what do we look like when we open? Do you have this, um, out for a couple, do, do we have some projections and forecasting looking at multiple years? As you know, some of these grade levels are obviously smaller, that are coming through the bubble, I know, yeah, I don't know.
Well, so far we've had, I, I think we're at double-digit for scenarios and I have not run that. Maybe once we narrow it down, that we could do, we could roll the kids forward a year at a time and see what that looks like.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking of, you know, even if we go in this week, that, that was one thing when I was up there on the game today, like, I'd really like to see, because we're going five, we want this to last for five years, what do, what do we look like on year three? Might that, and I get, I get that it's a projection, but might that make me, uh, change my mind?
Sure, sure. Scott, that's a great question, because that, I wonder if we add that additional layer of complexity? Something would have to give, not just for the task force, but also for Dave. Would we then potentially say if we got an extra layer of detail that maybe we want to narrow it back from three to, to two options as a trade-off?
What we could do as well is bring that to the task force and see if there's something that jumps at them and say, maybe needing one, we don't have it, but when we lock in a little bit, say, let's have a year one, year two, year three, and see if we can crank something like that out. But I, I appreciate you.
And I, I want to be sensitive to that, that, I know that's gonna be a lot of work, but then I'm thinking the new tool that we have, does it, will, will it allow for that a little easier than, say, last year?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, because I was minimally involved before, but e- e- either way, it, it will take a little bit of time. But if that helps make a better decision, then, then that's what we'll do. If that's what the group is looking for, then that's what we'll do.
Well, I think, and just even the three that we have are, are so similar and so close in terms of metrics. I think durability would be a big tipping point that, you know, this one looks great three years out versus this one goes right off the rails. Not that I think any of them would go right off the rails, but I would just be interested to see that.
Yeah, I, I think, as I hear it, I think that's an interest, that would be interesting to check as well.
Really, the driver was more quite frankly, East and West, because those are the ones that are, you know, shown in the red. And if we're already in the red, do, do we get worse or do we actually have some relief, you know?
Well, Kevin, actually, if you could help me out, I think this year's sixth grade class was six ninety or last year's was.
Or last year.
Six ninety, now it's a six sixty this year. So, he's down thirty, and I think that these projections ac- actually show that class in, in the middle school. And I think the subsequent classes, and I don't, I, I'd be guessing, but I think they're, I don't know, if you look further ahead, I, I think they're a little bit smaller for the next few years.
Yeah, until down, I think down to like third grade.
Uh, I'd have to look again, but.
Yeah, me too, but.
I think that they're still right on the edge, the middle schools are.
Yeah.
But to see how they flow in and, and see that we're not discrepant there would be interesting as well. If there's not a, happens to be a bulk of sixth graders over here compared to over here, it takes us out of whack down, down the road, or third graders or fourth graders. So, I think maybe once we narrow it even to two, that, that might be something we look at.
One question, please.
I was just gonna say, I do prefer going to the task force, three options versus two options.
Me too.
I think it's better, gives more discussion, I guess.
Yep, okay, and I'm gonna continue to emphasize, these are, the, the decision is gonna be made here, but these are for opening discussion to get us started, okay? So, these three, one A, two A, and two B are what goes.
Yeah.
And I'll keep that one, that little graphic I had in there that kind of shows the difference. And if we just slot out that one that looks like Popeye's arm, you know what I'm talking about?
I had to look at that quite a bit, I'm like, oh, oh.
Maybe like yours.
Well, no, not on my.
Yeah, yours, I had to find.
Yeah, all right.
So one question I have is, um, did we decide not to have a task force weigh in on the budget issue with ninth grade moving up? We had talked about maybe making a smaller.
Yeah, that would be, that's more of a finance discussion, not a.
Okay, I, I thought we had, we had asked them to weigh in, but it is more of a budget conversation.
It's a budget conversation.
Okay, so we will stick to the attendance areas and see what comes out of it, okay? So, if you remember, I think it's Tony, Angela, Reggie, so.
Well.
No, not Tony.
No, yeah, I misjudged and I corrected it with Sarah, it is actually not Tony, it is Reggie, Angela, and I.
Okay, all right, I will make that change and then, thank you. You could be a concerned citizen. All right, so you'll get an invite tomorrow, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Seven point three, the budget's gonna bring us home. Let's bring it home with numbers, where's Suzanne? Come on down. Uh, do you want, do you have a team? Anybody want to sit by Suzanne? So, do you want me to tee this up a little bit? So, just so everybody knows, Suzanne, I had asked Suzanne a little while ago, in light of the changes that we've made here in the district office, if there are changes that we may ultimately be considering with potentially staffing or scheduling or whatever, because there've been some questions raised as, does everything stay as is right now? And this is one of her, um, one of her deliverables was to kind of figure out, how much time will it take for us to be able to know whether or not things stand as is or if we're gonna make some changes? So she's got a timeline, she's gonna cover with us on how we're gonna get there.
Scott, so this right now, as you can see, is in draft form, so I'm gonna walk through my draft and welcome feedback and comments on it. So, this is just the planning for the process timeline for eighteen-nineteen. So, in regards to what we're currently doing, we'll still be looking at our seventeen-eighteen numbers every month in the learning sessions or on annual board feeds every month. So, this is just related to how we're gonna get to next year in staffing and things like that. The one thing that I would say is lacking the most here is figuring out where communications and those types of things are going to be. So, as we see things, we can add, add them in. So in August, I put June, July, that we formed the CPAC committee and we've been meeting every month. We did, um, we canceled the August meeting because there wasn't as much to talk about, so we have a September meeting scheduled. So, um, in August, we will meet with each school, we'll have a list of their staffing and kind of what, what it looks like in the current system, and go through those lists with each buildings, make sure they agree that those staff are there. We'll look at budget codes in terms of what funding source, those are coming or we get paid out of, and go through that list and make sure that we're all in agreement on where our starting point is. We'll also look at kind of their operational or discretionary budgets, their supplies and travel, whatever it may be. And then in September, we would do some informational sessions to the school board and CPAC to kind of talk about what the results of those were and figure out what the next steps are, you know, what do we think an ideal size looks like? What does each building need? I think at one point, we kind of have a list of sizes and what we think that looks like, but I think we need to revisit that to see what, what our priorities and our principles are for the, for the next budget cycle. So we'd be looking at class sizes, school population, comparison to projection, and, you know, moving forward. I don't expect that a lot of this is gonna need any board action, it's more just updating you in terms of what we've done and where we're sitting. So I would think in September, there's not gonna be a lot of board involvement, but just keeping you in the loop on where we're at. Uh, CPAC is a new committee, we haven't really determined what role they want, you know, that we want them to act in. So, up to this point, it would be during budget revisions and setting of the budget to talk about budget assumptions and kind of how we got there. They are obviously chomping at the bit to help with anything that we would like them to. So, during this time, it's just a matter of, do we want them to get into the weeds or don't we? And they are happy to do whichever, I just want to be fair to them and say, your role is really only gonna be two or three times a year or it's going to be more frequently, so we know what their role is gonna be. Then in October, we'll be talking about the sustainability of our staffing model and talking about some of the things that we know will be happening in the transition period. So, the needs of Pearson and East West and the high school when we have different grades and move everything around. So we know that Pearson's gonna have some needs, we know that we need to align them and figure out if they're gonna look exactly like every other elementary school, making sure that those are a factor into our budget. And then we'll be looking at some comparables and we'll be looking at core staffing levels and looking at timelines for the fund balance. Now, when the finance committee met, we talked a little bit about how well are we gonna be able to set those goals if the numbers are still moving a little bit? So I would say we have, that we talk about it and then we can always revisit it and adjust as needed as more information becomes available. November and December, we'll have audit results, so then we'll actually feel comfort, confident that what we're using as our baseline isn't changing and that there's nothing that we missed. So then we'll look at the capacities and counts based on the new attendance areas, and see where do we sit? You know, if our principals and our assistant principals and all those things, what we need with less kids in buildings. At that time, we would present a five-year plan or forecast, just to kind of see what numbers do as certain levels of funding we don't have, you know, what happens with staffing and having to roll some staffing that maybe was paid out of some funding source that goes away, making sure that we've rolled those into what will have to come out of the general fund at some point down the road. And then we would be needing again the principals and all staff to make sure we've captured any additional revenue and possibly involve any other reductions we missed and, you know, just circling everybody back together. And then January, we'd be actually finalizing that staffing model to make sure that everyone's in agreement and review the preliminary revised budget for seventeen and eighteen. And then in February, Nancy and her group would like the staffing allocation so that we can make plans and communicate and do what needs to take place in February. I don't know, I put April May for the approval of budget, because obviously the longer you wait, the more accurate your numbers are. But you can do that really, whether it's April May or June, I remember you're flexible on that.
Thank you for sharing this, it's great to see the whole cycle and all the different inputs and outputs and when we're, when it would be reviewed with the board and when it would be reviewed with CPAC. I think I, say if we say, I speak for the whole group, we, we see that, you know, there's only a few times when we're part of this. This is a lot of work that you, your team, working with Keith and the HR team, working with the building principals, working with T and L, there's a lot of work that's gonna be going on in this cycle, so I look forward to seeing the results.
And I guess I've seen the more collaborative we are, the better decisions we make. Everybody weighs in and we're likely making some decisions that don't affect. Everybody weighs in and we're likely making some decisions that don't affect our kids and our classrooms.
So theoretically, I, I knew this all happened, but. Right.
I'm gonna challenge you on that. I don't know that it's happened before. It's happening now.
Right, not to that little detail.
Well, I, I, that's what I was just gonna say. I've never seen anything laid out like this before and it's awesome.
It's good for us because when we talk about some of the survey results and accuracy of payroll and things like that, this really allows us on the front end to say, let's make sure that all these numbers look right, that we've got them in the right places. Because otherwise, it's not as easy to analyze the data after the fact if you're always correcting it on the back end. Because then the payroll system, you can't all pull a clean report from that says, here's where everybody is because we moved them on the back end. And it's not easy to, to trace everything through.
Right.
So it will make things cleaner. And then we're also working on just some communications at the beginning of the year in terms of making sure everyone understands how, how payroll, how to review your paycheck, what you should look at. And developing some spreadsheets to say, if you plot what you think your contract is in here, here's what your check should say. Just do a little check and balance to make sure we can catch some things earlier.
Very cool.
Questions for Suzanne?
Everybody's still waiting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Number eight is the infamous other. Since we have no other, we'll move on to nine.
Wait, I have another. Or are we gonna do it around the horn?
We can.
I don't really have another.
One's tabling her other, starting to age.
It's a long day.
Upcoming meetings and important dates. We have BAC on Wednesday night. Then we've got BAC again August ninth. August fourteenth is a board business meeting. Sixteenth, BAC, and the thirtieth, BAC. So we're balking a lot in August.
BAC is ready because also open house ninth in the district.
There it is. Okay, move on to ten. Let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sweet.
Oh, oh, oh. Just look down at number eleven. And eleven goes up to number ten. So we will now open up, say, public comment. If there's any public people who want to comment, you can do so at this time.
Cut a line.
Okay, we'll close, I think, ten, thank you for your feedback. Move on to eleven and that is entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
What?
To adjourn.
Wait.
Um, where, are we gonna take offline the conversation about the action for the sale and the action for A and I?
Oh.
You want to discuss action dates right now?
Well.
See if we can put that in.
Yeah.
Uh, let's do it right now, since everybody's here. Well, we'll listen, Reggie and Mary, but we can at least get the ball on.
We'll post something on this week that the app will.
So we do need, we have, we have to get back together because we've got some action we need to take now. I will say that Suzanne and I and Matt talked at, in the finance committee meeting. We believe that we need not have the board back together before she can go ahead and execute the purchase agreement. So provided the title company or the seller does not have any, anything that like would require some board action, we believe that she's probably at power to go ahead and do this. And then we will just bring it to the board and approve on the August fourteen.
I'll have to, we'll have to check a little bit more of the realtor. I was getting the impression that there needs to be a motion to authorize the sale. It's not so much the closing. It was discussed at the January retreat. But no actions.
I think we should probably, let's take that offline now. Let's figure out exactly what they need. Because we're not remembering that we've taken that particular action before. Is this new or is this?
We have done.
We have taken action to authorize the sale before the individual announcement. All right, in that case, if we have to have a special meeting to do this, if we need a three-day course, all we need is quorum. So we would, I, I guess we need to know how soon they need that authorization.
The request for the, the sale was, they request, and I'll say it now, the request is by the end of this week. If we can pull that off. The other action is the achievement and integration and that is needed by August fourth.
And that's.
We could do both of them at the same time. They're both very quick.
So the good news is, we have an agreement on the sale of the land, which is what we wanted to do for the end of June. We need to figure out, for those watching, how quickly we can, we can convene to make that happen. So I guess, everybody should probably jump on their calendars and see if it's feasible. Even if you posted something right now, the earliest we could do it would be.
Friday.
Friday.
I am gone in San Francisco until Monday night. How do you know?
Friday night, I'm not available on looking at.
Early morning.
Yeah, morning.
Friday morning, I could do like a seven, seven-thirty maybe, but a eight.
What, when do you leave?
I, I leave Thursday night, until Monday night.
Well, Reg is gone. I could do early. If we do it Friday morning, you have to be real here.
I could do it Friday morning.
I know.
I'll take one for the teens.
Maybe we could have a lock-in on Thursday night. So how early is, too early to try to pull something together? You guys read that?
Six thirty.
Six thirty? That actually.
Sarah just threw up. Can we do a conference call?
Can I conference?
Have holograms for Skype.
Yeah, essentially, it's up to the foreview then, huh? Because Reggie's still back.
What time, six thirty?
Six thirty?
Can we say seven? Can we negotiate?
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five.
Six fifty?
Do I hear six?
Six forty-five. Well, I gotta drive, so. So six forty-five on Friday morning.
Six forty-five.
And it'll be a special meeting exclusive for the exclusive.
Authorization for the lion sale and the seventeen, eighteen.
Champion.
And who will be here at six forty-five to give us the high level on the integration plan?
I have it already.
Okay.
So I can shoot it out as soon as possible. And then if you feel like you would like something, you're held.
I guess, as long as we know who to contact for questions.
Yep, I already have it. Yep.
All right, sorry, Mike, that, hey, why not?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Can we not record that, please?
Why?
Wouldn't mind it now.
No, wait, that's her.
Okay, so we're good with six forty-five on Friday. Thank you. Uh, now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved.
Right.
There you go. It's all you. All of the favoritism party saying hi.
Hi.
We are.